I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. The Chair appoints Patty Burke and Tom Everett to serve as counters this evening if in fact there is a need for a counted vote. Please either silence your cellphone or put it on vibrate mode. If you want to speak to the article, please go to the center microphone right up in front. With that said, Article One, Mr. Galant moves that the-
Could you just indicate that it's being broadcast?
Oh, I'm sorry. And it is being broadcast and it is being videotaped. Article One, Mr. Galant moves that the town vote to amend the vote taken on Article Eight of the June Fourth, 2019 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Operating Budget by supplementing the amount appropriated for the Quavon Regional School District budget with the additional amount of $44,146. And further to meet this appropriation by approving the budget line item transfers set forth in the handout provided to voters. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Williams. It is recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. At this point, the Chair will recognize the Town Administrator, Mr. McLean.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for your patience. My name is Ryan McLean. I'm the Town Administrator here in Hubbardston. Just wanted to outline the documents you have and put this into context for you. It's a very important discussion and decision point for the town that needs to be sort of explained. So the document you have in front of you, the front sheet is the summary, and then you have the line items. And I will briefly explain what's entailed in this particular vote. So first, why do we need to vote this budget again? So we did vote our budget at the annual town meeting in June. The school assessment, or the number that Town Meeting approved for the Quavon Regional School District was less than what was certified by the school committee. So in a regional school district, sixty-six percent of the towns have to approve a budget in order for it to be approved in the region. So for our district, that's four of the five towns need to approve the budget. So three of the towns in the Quavon Regional School District voted the budget, voted their particular assessments, or numbers less than their assessments. So that was us, New Braintree, and Hardwick. So each one of those towns will need to do what we're doing, which is meet again. So the budget goes back to the school committee for their consideration. They can go up, stay the same, or go down, and it comes back to the town for consideration again at a town meeting, which is what we're doing here. You have forty-five days to do that, which is why we're meeting in August and having a difficult time getting a form. So why are there so many changes, then? So you might be asking, if you look at the budget as it's presented in the budget lines, there are many colors. It is the colored lines that are being recommended to you for change. So why is there so many? In a bigger town, you might see the ability to increase in order to meet a larger assessment with just one line item. So you might vote just for the school line item. Given that our budget is so small and so lean and so constrained, in order to meet higher numbers for anything, we need to make adjustments around the board. And I'm going to explain what those adjustments are and try and make them as clear as possible. So in your budget, yellow means that the number went up, and I'll explain why a number might have gone up if we're facing a deficit. And orange means the number went down from our annual town meeting. So some of the reasons why things might change. At annual town meeting, we're dealing with numbers that are, in some cases, projected. Okay? Right now, we're already into fiscal year 2020, so some numbers we know now to be real, and those could be more than we thought or less than we thought. Normally, we project conservatively, so a lot of the numbers that we have that are actual, we're able to realize some savings to try and make up some of the deficit between our number and the certified school assessment number and other budget items that needed to be changed. Another reason for all the changes, we did a very large staff reorganization to try and make our budget more efficient. One of the things that was done is we had a retirement with our town clerk. We were lucky enough to have an in-house candidate, who was the strongest candidate, Lori Reed, for our town clerk position. So took advantage of that and reorganized my staff and combined the executive assistant position with the finance assistant in order to save money and make things a little bit more efficient, right? Because of that, though, what Lori or other executive assistants brought to the table, we needed to increase some of the hours around the office to overcome some of the things that she did to help other departments. Also, our assessing assistant. So we've had a little bit of revolving door with the assessing assistant position. It's difficult to find someone who's qualified to do that and willing to do it at the wages that we're able to pay. So we regionalized recently with Rutland in order to provide assessing assistant services in both communities. Both communities are run by RRG, which is our regional assessor. So we took on this employee because it's a little bit cheaper for us to pay for benefits, but Rutland is supplementing that cost to us by giving us revenue for this shared agreement. So Rutland gets twenty hours, we get twelve, and we're able to save a little bit of money. This was about a $13,000 expense. Now it's an $11,500 expense for us because of that regionalization. And lastly, there's a lot of changes because we need to meet the needs of the school. So the certified assessment asked for more money from the town in order to meet the needs of the school. We need to get to that number or do the best we can, so some changes are involved there. So what are the changes? If you bear with me, I'm going to go through briefly and tell you what the changes are recommended. So in line two, adding $4,000 to the budget for HR consulting. As part of that consolidation, my office needs more support. We lost some hours due to the executive assistant change. There's a reduction in the select board account, that's expenses account, that's line three. Normally, the select board expenses account is used to mail warrants to each home, to provide communication to residents, to do professional development for staff, and to keep compliant with legal. So every dollar we take out of that makes it more and more likely that we're not going to be able to mail warrants to folks anymore or do other things that we need to do in order to make sure that we get enough people here at town meeting. Line eleven, the town clerk certification. It takes three years to qualify for this, so that's a line item we can reduce at this point. Line seventeen is town accounting services. We regionalized our accounting services, but right now, we have an overlap. So our old accountant is helping close out nineteen. Our new accountant is coming in to provide better services, more efficient services, but there is a cost overlap there, so we've increased that to cover what will be next year's expense. We will not need to increase this line item next year. Big change in line twenty, the assessing assistant. So that looks like a real big change, right? Thirty thousand for a new employee, but again, we're not paying most of that. Rutland's paying sixty-five percent of that cost, so to us, it's only $11,500. Line twenty-eight, the finance assistant. We eliminated that position and combined it with the executive assistant. Line thirty-four, town custodian. We're increasing a couple hours. This custodian does the entire town's worth of duties in twelve hours a week. Line thirty-seven, that's actual cost for the town website, so that was an easy reduction. Jumping quite a ways to line seventy-eight, the economic development coordinator we share with all Quavon towns, that's an actual assessment. We thought it would be seven thousand, it's actually forty-one hundred for this year. Line seventy-nine, I'm sorry, eighty, the master plan expenses. We haven't used that in a couple years, and we've been able to secure approximately thirty to fifty thousand dollars in grant money to help supplement the master plan expenses. Line eighty-one is the planning board assistant, adding hours of service there in order to supplement the growing needs of the planning board. Same thing for the line eighty-two, the board of health and comcom assistant, and the building assistant, making sure that we're at max capacity for clerks in those positions. The next line, it's important you understand, line eighty-six, this is the Quavon Regional School Assessment line. So you'll see under department requests that the most recent certified assessment from the Quavon Regional School District was $4,751,988. At town meeting, we approved $4,693,549. The Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen is recommending to the town that we fund this line item at $4,737,695, which is $14,293 less than the school committee has certified for their assessment, which would mean this would be a rejection of that budget. Line ninety-one-
Ryan, can I just say one thing? And just to be clear, I don't know if we said it before. So the school committee did come back with a new number. So again, it's not the old number that we're working off of. The school committee came back, which we'll go over a little bit after, with a new number in between our annual town meeting and this special town meeting. So we've been working to try to get towards that, and that was the result of where we've gotten to.
Line ninety-one is the DPW assistant. That's an additional hour to support the DPW, mostly in the financial realm. Lines ninety-three and ninety-four, this is road maintenance money and general highway money. So this money was requested in order to repair culverts in preparation for Chapter Ninety expenses next year, in addition to the fact that we ran out of road maintenance money in April this year. So that additional money was going to help with potholes from May through June. We are recommending that that money be cut. We'll try and find a way to continue to maintain the roads at the current level, and we'll have to take more Chapter Ninety money in order to do the covert work, which means less road paving next year for that type of reduction. Line one oh six is council and aging director. This used to be at a sixteen-hour-a-week position. We reduced it to fourteen at town meeting to allow a workable wage that was at a greater percentage with the council and aging director's peers, plus the fact that the council and aging director works way more than nineteen hours. We're just trying to make that a competitive position and where it should be. Lines one thirteen and one fourteen, we have an interim library director, so that's actual salary. We're reinvesting, or the trustees have asked that we reinvest the difference between the old library director and the new, and the library assistant wages to try and keep the library open longer and provide more services to residents. Almost done, I promise. Okay, and then on the back page, we did a very careful, we're trying to find money wherever we can, a careful analysis of the health insurance budget. So this is not a budget that you can put exactly where it needs to be. So this budget may increase by anywhere from zero percent to ten percent on January first, plus if any of our employees decide to take insurance, or we hire a new person that decides to take insurance, we need just a little bit of flexibility in here. So you keep cushions in your health insurance budget in order to not have to go for more money. So we feel comfortable in reducing the contingency in that line item in order to try and solve some of this deficit problem, but we do know that that is taking a risk. So this is about one extra employee's worth of health insurance money, which is danger close. That could change tomorrow. But it's worth taking the risk in order to not lose services elsewhere and to also invest in the schools. Finally, the insurance number, which is one thirty-eight, that is actual cost. Insurance, we pay for liability in the town, and then also physicals and other things for employees who work for us. So how will this be voted? So we've already approved most of the items. The ones that aren't colored have already been approved. So we need to vote on the amended lines or any combination of those lines in order to approve the current budget. So we're going to go through line by line. Obviously, the school budget is the most impactful in terms of the rest of the budget, so that one's going to be voted first, because if that is different, then it changes the entirety of the way we've put this budget together. So how does this impact the bottom line? So it's important that all, you heard me say at annual town meeting, that budgets need to be put in context. So Hubbardston is currently operating in a deficit. What that means is we're borrowing money against the future, or using one-time revenues, this year $100,000 in order to supplement the operating budget. Last year, we used $133. We have an aggressive plan to reduce this reliance, but there's no saying that the economy's going to stay the same or that state aid is going to stay the same. So what happens if we don't get the revenue that we projected? What happens is we have a $100,000 hole in the budget, and we'd have to cut another $100,000 out of this budget, and you've kind of seen how painful it is to cut $44,000 out, which is what we've been able to do. The revenue projections in this budget are very high, well above the best practice in order to provide the level of services that residents want, knowing the restrictions of the revenue that we have. So what that means for you is if we're projecting revenue high and it doesn't make it, that means we're also either going to have to make cuts or have less free cash. Why free cash matters in a town like Hubbardston is it is the entirety of our capital expense program. So all these items that we need to buy in order to keep the town running the way it is, the less free cash you have, the less ability you have to do that, the less ability you have to save for what will inevitably be an economic downturn in the future. You want to be able to draw into your reserves and pay for your capital using excess monies. Lastly, this budget is very lean. It doesn't have any contingencies in it. So in a perfect world, and we hope that the world stays perfect, we'd be able to meet all the expenses that we have this year and have no issues. This year was a good example of that. We hit most of the things that we need. If anything changes, if the economy goes down or there's any other changes, then this budget is too lean to absorb that type of change. So we'd either need to dip into reserves or come back to a town meeting for more money at its current construction. Lastly, even at current staff levels, our largest complaint is about closed doors. So our really, really, really hard-working staff works as best they can. Most of them work sixteen hours a week, which is about three hours a day to handle resident concerns. We know that that's what this budget can afford, and we're happy to do it, but that means that for every hour that's not funded, residents complain to us that they can't get the stuff done that they need to do in order to grow the town or to run what it is they're doing with their business or their residency. This year, we ran out of road money in April, which is an important consideration because roads is our second biggest complaint, to close doors. At our current pace of spending, we face a $200,000 deficit with $100,000 of free cash used in the budget, which means we have to find a way to carve $300,000 out of this budget or increase our revenues. It's just not sustainable on the municipal side. This is a survive budget, but it is not a forward-leaning budget. I'm not a scare guy, I'm just giving you the facts. We have a plan in place to try and grow the budget, but we have to control costs. There's nothing left really to regionalize, there's nothing left to share, there's really nothing left to cut. There's nothing to make more efficient. And we'll try and we'll try and we'll try. I promise my staff will give you everything they have. There's just not a lot of wiggle room in a budget that's this lean. If anything changed, we would have an inability to fund future school assessments at any level. We'd have to reduce public safety because it's the only full-time employees that we have, and we would have to eliminate full-time personnel for town hall, and that's five people. So just putting the budget into context, this is not a commentary on any particular budget. Every department is asked to do their part in order to fund this because there is no appetite in Hubbardston to increase revenues. The only way to do that would be through an override. So you should digest this information and these budgets and ask as many questions you can to understand, because the budget is the number-one, most important item that drives the success of this town.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McLean. Okay, at this point, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion as far as the article? Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Mark Wigler, and I'm currently on the school committee. I'm also the Chair of the Budget Subcommittee, and we've been meeting on this Quavon budget since January. We started off with a 2.8% increase, and through several meetings, I want people to fully realize that the assessment that we asked for after the July meeting was a 1.9% increase in the overall Quavon budget, which is very reasonable in basically a struggle to keep our programs intact. What I would like to do is make an amendment to bring the number up by $14,293 to the original assessment that was issued to the town of Quavon of $4,751,988. I realize that that's a 6.31% assessment increase over last year for this particular town. There are several different reasons for that, which we didn't get into in the discussion that Ryan had, but the fact of the matter is, we need to come back to the $4,751,988 number, and that's increasing it by $14,000, which is on your paper.
So the amount in your amendment is fourteen thousand even?
The amount in my amendment is to increase, I guess your number was forty-four thousand The intent of the motion is to bring-
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to the amendment? There is a second to the amendment. So again, the amendment would be to strike $4,737,695 to $4,751,988. Okay? So that is what is before the town meeting at this time. So your comments have to be germane to the amendment. Anyone want to address the amendment? Yes, Mr. Galant.
Hi, Dan Galant, Chair of the Select Board. So we expected that there might be an amendment on the floor, you know, to adjust the number that was recommended unanimously by the Finance Committee and the Select Board. You know, we, in our evaluation of how sort of lean to make the budget, went as lean as we possibly could, as Ryan just stated. Anything beyond that sort of got us into doomsday territory, and so that's why we didn't support any more than the already sort of ultra-lean budget that was presented originally. So I guess that would just be my comment.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Hearing none. All in favor of the amendment, please raise your card. Thank you. Those opposed to the amendment, please raise your card. And the amendment fails. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Laura Foley from 12 Pitcherville Road. Earlier this summer, there was news that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts was releasing more money to schools in Western and Central Massachusetts, but based on the conversation and the budget tonight, it appears that that has now had no effect on the Quavon Regional School District. Could you please elaborate on that?
Mr. McLean?
I'm not an expert on it. We do have experts here. My understanding of what happened was there was an increase for Quavon for Chapter Seventy, but other assessments or monies that were expected for revenues actually decreased. So there was a decrease in state aid from the state for Quavon rather than increase, even though the Chapter Seventy, which is the most known number, went up. And if I said something wrong-
And I thought you'd just add to that real quick. So there were things we heard, again, I'm not an expert on it, but there were things which I may not even use the correct terminology, but something like a rural factor that was going to be put into things for districts like ours, and I don't think it sort of made the final cut.
It is true that there has been some press around increased funding for education, but the Quavon Regional School District did not receive any additional funding other than to Chapter Seventy-four, which is the school transportation line item. But we also had increases in our school choice and charter expenses that offset that increase. So we did not have an overall increase in funding.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion by Mr. Galant, please- Oh, line by line, I'm sorry about that. Okay, so the first one we'll- Okay, so the first one we'll be doing is the Quavon Regional School Assessment, and the amount is $4,737,695. Right, so if there is a hole, please say that quickly, otherwise we'll just be going through all of the other line items, okay? So all set? Next is going to be the DPW, oh, start again with the first, right? Start here. Okay. All right, here we go. So now, next, line two, HR consulting, and that is $4,000. Next is going to be line three, select board expenses, $7,500. Next is going to be line eleven, town clerk certification, zero. Next will be line seventeen, town accountant services, $42,000. Next will be line twenty, assessing assistant, $30,502. Next will be line twenty-seven, finance assistant, zero. Next will be line thirty-four, town custodian, $9,185. Next will be line thirty-seven, town website, $4,000. Next will be line seventy-eight, economic development coordinator, and that is $4,100. Next will be line eighty, master plan expenses, zero. Next will be line eighty-one, planning board assistant, $15,435. Next will be line eighty-two, board of health and conservation com assistant, that's $13,721. Next will be line eighty-three, $16,292. Next will be line ninety-one, DPW assistant, $13,721. Next will be line ninety-three, DPW road maintenance, $93,275. Next will be line ninety-four, general highway, $32,288. Next will be line one oh six, council on aging director, $15,281. Next will be line one thirteen, and that is library director, $27,000. Next will be line one fourteen, library assistant wages, $16,075. Next will be line one thirty, one thirty-five, Chapter Thirty-two B, health insurance, $165,000. Next will be line one thirty-eight, general insurance, $117,000. Total operating budget, $9,301,245. All set? All in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Those opposed, thank you. Those opposed? Thank you, and the article passes. Next comes Article Two. Mr. Williams moves that the town vote to transfer the amount of $60,000 from the municipal capital stabilization- from the municipal capital stabilization fund be expended under the direction of the board of selectmen to conduct a schematic design study of the Hubbardston Center School, eight Elm Street, Hubbardston, for a potential roof replacement project, for which feasibility study, the town may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. The MSBA's grant is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA. And any cost the town incurs in connection with the feasibility study in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town. Is there a second? Segmented by Mr. Glott. It is recommended by the board of selectmen and the finance committee. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card, and it passes unanimously. The article passes unanimously. Anything else? The Chair declares the special town meeting adjourned at... I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
Did we actually vote on the school budget? I never heard that number read out, like what we were going to approve. We voted not to the amendment, but did we vote on the actual...
But then I read the total amount, and no one called a hold.
Oh, all right. I didn't hear that.
Okay. I did. Thank you. Okay. The Chair will now declare the special town meeting adjourned at eight oh one.